Council Bluff Savings Bank. Our goal is to help you, your families, and your businesses grow and prosper for generations. We take pride in our community, whether it's volunteering our time or helping individuals, families, and businesses succeed. We provide you with the personal service and attention you deserve. With over 220 years of banking experience, decisions are made locally. We are Council Bluff's people operating at Council Bluff's Bank to help Council Bluff's be a better place to work and live. Council Bluff Savings Bank. Hometown banking, the way it used to be. Member FDIC.
All right, if everyone would please stand and join us in the prayers of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And I'd like to start with a proclamation that reads as follows. City of Council Bluff, Iowa, Office of the Mayor, proclamation. Whereas September 17th, 2014 marks the 227th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 6915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, therefore, I, Matthew J. Walsh, Mayor of the City of Council Bluff, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week in the City of Council Bluff, Iowa, and ask our residents to reaffirm their ideals that the framers of the Constitution held back in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that the lost rights may never be regained. In witness herof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Council Bluff to be affixed this 22nd day of September, the year of our Lord, 2014. Matthew Walsh with a signature, and we'll give that to the Daughters of the American Revolution. And thank you for their service. All right, moving on to the agenda, can I get a motion on the consent agenda, please?
I move with the amendment that we consider item 7A immediately after 4A.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, public hearings, this is the time and place for a public hearing that's advertised on the matter of ordinance 6216, establishing the gun school urban revitalization area. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
Been received.
Are there any oral protests to this matter? Anyone who would like to speak against? Seeing none, what's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Or I guess anyone speaking in favor, anyone? Sorry.
Hello, my name is Mike Folleson. I'm Vice President of Affordable Housing Development with Selvin Company, 16910 Francis Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Earlier today at the study session, there was a question about the tax, the amount of tax abatement that would be attributable to this project, and done some estimating in the interim, and based on $65,000 unit of assessment, including the state rollback, and then applying the city's 39.2% share, it would come out to be about $264,000 over a 10-year period. That's on the basis of the community development block grant money coming through. If the deal is done as part of a tax credit project, the 10-year abatement amount will be roughly $102,000, based on the same methodology. Well, starting with, instead of a $65,000 assessment, having the assessment be about $25,000 per unit. And the reason why there's a differential there is because, under a tax credit scenario, state law provides that these types of properties can be valued based on a capping, an NOI, and using a cap rate that's established by the Department of Revenue, which I think is roughly a 10%, 10% cap rate. So that's, I hope that answers the council's questions from earlier.
Thank you very much for going to that work and making those calculations.
You're welcome.
And just for clarification, a cap rate is, leads to an income approach to the valuation rather than a market value? Any questions? What's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor saying?
I did have just a brief comment, and that is that I appreciate you going to work to come up with those numbers because, you see, for, you know, this does amount to some dollar amount that, over the course of those 10 years, encourages development. And that was indeed the purpose of the Chapter 404 Revitalization Districts. I've noticed that the city and the city council so far designated a number of these revitalization districts, but in each instance, they've been pretty much postage stamp-sized projects or postage stamp-sized zones to benefit a particular corporate project. And that's, there's no problem inherently with doing that, it's just that, under Chapter 404, we're able to designate a much broader area that could benefit small businesses, individual homeowners, and I really think that, as we consider some areas in need of redevelopment, particularly along, you know, we're right now looking for ways to repurpose and redevelopment, redevelop the West Broadway Corridor, that this would be an excellent tool to use to encourage businesses in those sorts of areas to renovate and increase their size. So I would urge community development to double down on that effort and see if we can't make better use of this, because really, the city as a whole benefits when these projects go forward.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Madam Clerk, are you reading the resolution?
Second. Resolution 14-253, approving the urban revitalization plan for the gun school urban revitalization area.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This is the time and place for a public hearing that's advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-261, approving the plan, specifications, and form of contract and cost estimate for the IPL Stormwater Outfall Improvements Project, fiscal year 15-23B. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests tonight? Anyone who wishes to speak against? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor? What's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This is the time and place for a public hearing that's advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-249, which would grant final plat approval for a 63-lot residential cluster subdivision to be known as Fox Run Landing Phase III. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests to this matter? Anyone who would like to speak against? Please come to the microphone and give your name and address for the record.
How about 4 and any against?
Okay.
How about Middle Road?
Anyone who would like to?
Like a city general.
There's a street down there called Middle Road, so, all right. All right, Bradley Point, 3102 Gold Rush Road, President, Fox Run Homeowners Association. As I came up for the council early this afternoon, Fox Run Homeowners Association is one part of the puzzle at Fox Run, then you have this Sevens, that's another part of the puzzle, and then you have the actual golf course. And now you have the new Phase III that's going to be plugged in there. There's, was a concern, ever since I lived there, I moved there in 2006, there's always been a concern about water within the drainage, the lakes, the retention ponds, they're called lakes, but they're actually retention ponds. And I do believe they capture water from the city streets, because we do not have a stormwater sewer system there. Now you progress along from 2006, it seems about every two years, we were pumping water out of the lakes as they would get high from high water, the river being up, as the river's up, hydraulic pressure pushes back, the water cannot seep out or evaporate fast enough. Then you have your annual rainfalls, so it always seemed like every couple of years, we're spending six, seven, eight thousand dollars every couple of months pumping water out. But then you also have to keep water in, because there's fish in the big lakes, and they all connect, so per DNR, you can't kill the fish. And then the seawalls, if you can imagine a seawall being probably the, what you can see wrapping around the podiums here, you have to keep water pressure up against them so they don't cave in. So it's, you're kind of on both ends, if you get what I mean. If you pump too much out, you're in trouble, and you gotta pump some in. During the dry seasons, we do have a pump system there, and we have to pump water in. And it's probably a thousand dollars a month if you let it pump during the month, it's about a thousand dollars each time you turn it on and let it go for about two or three weeks. Now we get to Phase III. It was brought up during the Planning Commission back in, I think it was February or March, I addressed three or four different issues, one of them being water retention area. Now, the field where the 59 houses are going in Phase III, when we get a lot of rain, that would kind of back up and absorb the water and be, we nicknamed it different names, you know, Lake Whatever, Lake This, Lake That. So we really didn't have trouble with average rainfall. Well, now, in August, we've, August, September, I think we've received about 15 inches of rain. Now we have a new road going through that field, and then you're going to add 59 houses and their driveways, that's going to catch more water, and it all has to go somewhere. And there's a retention pond on the southwest corner of the neighborhood down there, and it cannot hold what is being put into it right now, because it is up over the banks of the seawalls. Here's some of the houses on the very west side of that retention pond. Here's the water, that was yesterday. So it's up there in their backyards and up behind the seawall, and it's actually eroding, it's caving in here, caving in way up on the north end. This is on the southwest pond. Here's what some of the power structure you're putting in down there, you know, after a good rainfall, you got them surrounded by water. We have a little drainage problem behind some of the houses, but I'm working with Mr. Jerkovich on this, so that's after a good rainfall. So here's that big field, and the water either flows down here to the southwest corner or into these backyards, and then up to Council Point Road right across, I live on the corner of Gold Rush and Council Point, and it flows across the street into another retention pond. You can see, the water really should be back here, but it's way up here, this is that small pond, it's rather small when it's not out of its banks. Here's some of the flood protection that should have been, that was put in, and these are silt fences to hold back all the dirt, because there're going to be houses building here, there's these clusters that they're talking about, well, their backyards are going to be right up here to the water. So we have a problem there. There's some more of that back drainage after a good rain. This is the small ponds, when you come into Fox Run, the nursing home, there's a small retention pond here, it's all the way to the edge. There's a golf cart path. There is a retention wall there, but it's right to the top, and this is right across the cart path, there's another small retention area. If any of you came down 2011 when we had the big 10-inch rain, these connected, there was nowhere for the water to go. They almost connected back in August, September, when we were getting all the rain, it was up there, I said, oh, we're going to get connected again. But, and you can see where here, they can't even get through their docks, because it's pushing them out. There's another good one here, just... Here's the big golf course, if you've played golf down there, been around, this is the corner of Gold Rush, this is my backyard looking out here, so, yeah, we do have area for water to go, and it comes out onto the golf course, or up over the seawalls into their backyards. And we had a chunk of this cave in earlier this summer from water pressure. The water wasn't this high, but after some heavy rains in June, a chunk of the seawall up in here caved in. They got that repaired just in time for it, now it'll be right up to the top. So when we talk about water capacity, there is capacity, but not enough, you know, reasonable capacity. And we're not against the development, we want it to happen. But it was brought up that we, I suggested that southwest pond down there by the Sevens, that as long as you had the heavy equipment down there, dredge it out, dig it out, because I'd been down there in the low times when the water was down, and I could see four foot out from their seawall that part that I showed you was caving in, they probably only had two foot of water, and then it was another foot and a half to the top, because it had silted in from 2011 during the flood. That was all underwater for three or four months, a lot of silt in there. So the development or the plan, they dug and expanded a ditch along 55th Ave to push the water back, but that will fill up, and then you can see where the water, I showed you a picture where the water's going to push up, where they, what they did is flatten it out, it was, the banks were higher, and they graded them more at a slope, and to hope that the water would go up and expand out. Well, it's expanding out, but it's also causing a problem. So after I met today, I didn't mean to ruffle any feathers, it's no one person's fault, you know, it's Mother Nature. But every couple of years, we're running into Mother Nature. And John Jerkovich called me, and we had a nice little talk, and him and I have been getting along great, because I'd rather get along with them as an association than fight a development, it's senseless. So we're going to work together and try to come up with some kind of a plan between Fox Run, the Sevens, and the new Fox Run III, and maybe the golf course, we've got to get them on board. Because what we have there is a closed system, water can come in, water can't get out. You can get all the water in, but you have to get it out. And pumping is just, to me, that's senseless, you're throwing money out, and then you turn around two months later and you pump water back in. That's cost negative. So we're going to try to work about, oh, let's see, it was last year sometime, we worked with the city, one of the departments, to allow us to take a foot of dirt off of the northwest corner of the large lake to allow water to flow into the ditch on Highway 92. But that foot of soil that was allowed to be graded out, that was just dirt put there from when they were building the first phase of the Sevens, I think builders were just pushing their dirt out there, and then they shouldn't have. So we were allowed to grade that out, so when the water gets to the top of the seawall, it will flow out. Well, that's where it stops, right at the top. We need about another foot or six inches to bring it below the seawall top, so it's not flowing over in back of the seawalls, causing negative pressure and washout. So I think between John and myself and the President of the Sevens, and maybe some help from the city, maybe we could revisit the issue on the northwest, west end of the large lake at Fox Run, which is owned by the golf course, but I don't think they would argue if they could get some relief, because it'd take the water if you, this is a par five, I'm talking golf, but now it's a par four way up there, because the water's really pushed out onto their fairways, and I'm sure they would like to get a little relief and get it fixed, and so maybe we can get that done. So didn't make anybody mad, it's no one person's fault, it's Mother Nature and the cards were dealt with, but we need to get, we need to fix something so we can get rid of water versus just hanging on to it. Thank you very much, I know I probably took more than 10 minutes, but, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to speak against, in favor or down the middle of the road? Seeing none, what's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This is the time and place for a public hearing that's advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-250, which is to grant an easement and convey certain property rights in West Broadway right-of-way adjacent to lots 124, 128, 132, 134, and 136. Original plat and lots 1 and 2, auditor subdivision of the original plat lot 126. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests to this matter? Anyone who would like to speak against? And if you give your name and address for the record, please.
Ryan Rogers, 37 Horizon Drive, Council Bluff. I've got one question and two points. My first question to the council is, this project was brought up three months ago, or whatever, the initial project, there was a lot of opposition. I was opposed to it at first, because they talked about removing the parking. Then they came out with a plan that they weren't going to remove the parking, so I supported the project, I thought it was a good idea, at least we're getting development. Now we're revisiting this. How many people would have been against it initially? It went down on a 3-2 vote, I believe. How many more people would have spoke if this would have initially stayed in that we were going to remove the parking? That's my question to you guys. The second thing I've got is, for one business or for one building, we're willing to take out 15% of the parking on the street? I don't know if anyone's done the math, but we're willing to take out 15% is what the number is. My third point is, we take out the parking, which is used all year round, and now we're going to use it four or five months a year for a big patio. It just doesn't seem feasible to me.
Any questions? Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak against? Nikki, if your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Nikki Roberts, I live at 210 Wildwood. I've been on the 100 block for almost 18 years, and I agree with everything that Ryan has said, but once this was brought up to my attention, I actually have it on my phone, and I didn't take any pictures, but I can show you guys, the next day, I had, right in front of my salon, and I think a little bit to the west, towards Barley's, two vans full of handicap people, walkers and wheelchairs getting out of there. And I just think that every business on that block doesn't have a straight entryway, you have to go stairs in the back. I get we're getting free parking, city parking, I'm sorry, in the back, which is going to be a huge plus, but we also have to have some sort of handicap facility for retail space on the 100 block. We've dealt with a lot, we've, I mean, I get, I get that you were trying to better the south side of Broadway, I guess, but when I saw, there was probably nine people getting out of that van, every single one of them, wheelchairs, walkers, and they're not going to have that, and we have to have that on Broadway, we have to have that. Right now, we're fighting up against all the construction, and we are losing customers because of it. And I get this is a temporary thing, but we have to be able to have that for our customers. So, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions? Anybody else wishing to speak against? Anyone who would like to speak in favor of?
Good evening. Julie Stavnek, J. Development Company, 142 West Broadway, Suite 140. In regards to the comments about a couple of months ago, this looking a little differently, it did. At that time, we realized we had to elevate the building a little bit, this actually shows the building, if in fact, we can do outdoor dining on it. What has happened is, we have to elevate the building a little bit based on the site, we did know that. We've looked at, our architect helped us look at trying to wrap around to do parking, maybe on a side, or, excuse me, outdoor dining on one of the sides. We've looked at potentially doing the doors, the garage doors, and based on the structure, how it's designed right now, and the look of a garage door, we didn't think that would be the greatest idea. The reason we couldn't do a side right now is because of, that is our means of egress, there's just not enough room to do it on either side of the building. But what happened is, our architects, as well as our marketing firms, said, you know, it's kind of last call from where you're at construction-wise, are you going to pursue outdoor dining? And in order to do so, the fact is yes, these five stalls would have to go away. So this shows, those stalls going away, it shows, it is a ramp, actually a handicap ramp that gets you up and to, up and out, which is another reason why it takes up a lot of the sidewalk. But this does provide outdoor dining options. And I think what I did is, I took a step back, J. Development could long be gone from Council Bluff's 10, 15 years down the road, but ultimately, someone will own it. And I've also, we've been on the block for over eight years and was here for both sides of the street being renovated, and I think I just took a step back and said, what's our long-term goal for the 100 block? I want it to be, it's great now, but what, how can it be better? What are things that we can improve? And the more, I believe, the more housing that's down there, as well as the more outdoor activities, are ways to continue to grow it in a positive manner. Now, that being said, yes, I'm also very sensitive of parking. Right now, it's completely awful parking is because of all the construction, especially behind the building, and especially on like a Friday at 5:00. So I get it, I'm not unattentive to it. If my businesses and my residents and my tenants aren't happy, my businesses won't succeed with the addition of this building, because this is a total of 9,000 square feet of commercial, and the 1892, which is eight, that's 17,000 square feet of commercial space that I own, and I want my tenants to also have access to parking, and I realize that's important. Actually, then because of that, and I've always talked about being part of a parking solution, I had had conversations, actually Pete Tulapana with the iOS Foundation had called me and said he had some complaints, because parking is a problem, what do I think are solutions? And there's multiple solutions, some are cheaper than others, but my response is, let's all sit down and talk about it. And I don't, and then at that time, around the end of August, he had asked PCDC, Amy Recker, if she would be lead, having a meeting to discuss, what are some parking options? When are all the, because there's different times when it's problems, everybody might have a different scale on when those problems are, so let's identify all the problems. We also had talked to the city about a parking study, all those things. Within the last three or four weeks, there's been several correspondence, we just weren't able to coordinate a meeting. And no dates were set, so therefore, that hasn't happened as of yet. So that was Wednesday or Thursday of last week, then I decided that I needed to take it in my own hands to just do some door-to-door asking if people were okay with those five stalls going away. And it was hard to, it's hard to kind of come up with a, what do I want to say, some people are tenants, some people own the buildings, this is a little mix of both. But what I do feel is, I did get a diverse amount of folks that were okay with the five stalls. Also, the other thing that's changed from what I presented to you, is that we weren't sure, there are 37-plus stalls that we're creating on the main floor of the, behind our building, and we talked about it, we didn't really talk about it being public parking before, but we've realized to control it will be nearly impossible to do, so those 37 stalls that we are creating will be available to the first-floor tenants of the 100 block. When I say tenants, I mean all the commercial spaces. With the one caveat, that I think the only rule that we will have is, if you're parked there after 11:00 PM at night, or 11:30, depending on businesses that we will probably tell you at that time, because we're afraid that some of our residents will use that underground, it's a covered parking structure, so that our residents more than likely, or some residents might decide to, under the snow, just stay there. So... Um with that being said, the other thing that's changed is yeah, we don't intend uh. And we talked today about maybe even in the development agreement, talking about five stalls. Um just making sure that, you know, three years down the road, if some of our tenants are complaining that we're still locked into making sure that five. Stalls are for the public in that structure. Um. So I do have some support letters here, I also did a square footage analysis, but like I said, it's it's a little mix um based on the fact that uh. Some are tenants, some are business owners. Um but the business owners that I that I was able to generate some support were Marcus Shoes, uh Pluff Sew and VAC. Uh Bloomworks, Legit Music, True Wheel Bicycle, The Chamber, Hughes Iron Building. Uh the uh Hounds Bar Rodeo Bar, uh. Earhart Griffin and Associates and I'm not sure if I said Legit Music or not, so. Um I do have also, uh there's going to be a new owner, it's an attorney that's buying uh one forty-eight Broadway and he has a support letter. Um I believe he's putting a salon in. And then Diane Stein who uh her tenant, uh which is twenty-twenty Vision, didn't want to give support, they supported it, but they weren't the business owner, so she gave us a letter of support as well. Um and then I also have a support letter from P C D C here and I can, I don't know if you all want copies?
Motion to receive and file, second.
Our project moves forward, um again, we're excited, I I I really feel, and this is honest, um it's going to cost us more money to create. This now. Um to do the project, but it won't be something that we could add in a couple of years from now because it's if you. I guess if you see the picture, the railing and the elevations of things just, it it would just be too costly to come in and do it at a later date. And I just feel like uh it would be a little remiss not to have a balance on both sides to have the activity that I know that we all want on the hundred block, so.
Is there any questions?
How are you, um I I do appreciate your your consideration of the of the the parking constraints down there and we all know that they exist.
Yep.
So um I'm very appreciative of the fact that the five places that are going away, you you have now committed to. Basically putting those five spaces back into the parking pool. How will you designate those spaces so that the general public is going to know? You know, because I don't want them to be confused and just think there's there's no parking at all, is there signage or or something?
Um since that was a a discussion today, this afternoon, I really haven't thought through completely how the implementation of that would be. I mean as of now, it's not going to be marketed as not public parking, I mean it'll. It's public parking, the if you're saying like how do we restrict those five stalls in the future if if it gets to that point? Um sure we could figure something out. Is that what you're asking though? Or are you just going to say are we going to have a sign that says public parking?
Well, the sign public parking, but then, you know, maybe directional or or maybe.
Maybe, I mean again, that's to me a hundred block, that's a whole solution that we need to solve, it seems like most of our websites, we don't have. Here there's parking behind our buildings or there's parking here or sorry, you know, like I think that we could, as a group, as an organization, I want to be part of of solutions to that.
Right, no, and I appreciate that, so that the five stalls in the back. Um because you have tenants that are also going to want to be, so I don't know if you're going to outline those five in pink or something.
Well, right now we didn't, that's going into the lease-up of these, we haven't, we don't want to commit, you get seven stalls to any business, that's. Um that's one of the reasons why I feel comfortable saying that we're going to leave it open.
Okay.
Um that it's going to be kind of a first come, first served.
Okay.
Basis. Um so that's.
But five definitely, you will, you'll make five available definitely to replace the five that are coming out the front.
Yeah, like I said, I'm not sure that, I don't have that figured out how structurally we'll do it, but yes.
You will, okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Don spoke of amending the development agreement to address that issue earlier today.
Okay.
Uh since all other public parking in that area has meters on it, that might be one way to regulate that aspect of it.
Oh, there you go.
I was going to ask you if you had any other properties even maybe over um in Omaha that are similar to what Exarban did with. They went ahead and put in, even though it's privately unlocked, they went ahead and put in the parking meters and they contract with the city to do that, to turn over the parking. Have you discussed, do you have any properties where you've tried that?
We haven't, we haven't, um we discussed, we have discussed that um with the city uh at a couple of points, but never. Never really came to a decision on it, so.
Well, meters would certainly define what the what the public.
Absolutely, the five meters, yeah.
That's better than my idea of putting them in pink.
Great, well, since October.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
What's the council's pleasure?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, oh sorry.
I'll second that.
Well, I was going to finish my motion was that um, but then I would like to include that it be addressed in the development agreement. You know, it's subject to being addressed in the development agreement that a minimum of five spots are never going to be taken away from that. If we can do that.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Um in preparation for uh for our consideration of the Bluffs twenty-thirty uh plan that will. Take up later this evening, I I was carefully reviewing all the all the words in there about. Planning objectives and there were a number of objectives listed. Uh involving traffic and and parking and 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 flow. And uh and I noticed a lot of safety concerns listed on page fifty-nine and then again at page sixty-five and. What kind of caught my attention is that uh in our uh Bluffs twenty-thirty plan, uh we we have a nice picture. Of the parking on on that side of the one hundred block as it existed before the construction started. And it it kind of holds that that particular block as it was before construction as kind of the the benchmark for how things ought to be. And uh and so now we're we're considering changing how things ought to be. Uh before we even vote on the twenty-thirty uh plan. And so I'm kind of troubled by this and I'm I'm just thinking that if if indeed we we support the twenty-thirty plan, then we we ought to. Uh start start uh. Governing decisions by by the words contained in that plan, we can begin tonight.
Which page is that on, just so I can kind of?
Page sixty-five.
My page is numbered. So does it, okay, here we go, that'll help.
Yep.
It talks about.
Oh, it's picture of sidewalk here, this one here?
Uh huh, yeah, and there's a number of objectives listed below. That for safety concerns and then there's kind of a repeat of uh of other objectives back on page fifty-nine that also. Go to uh traffic safety.
How would it make it less safe if the parking was in the back versus the front, I'm. I'm kind of confused on that on that point and and also if they put a picture in the twenty-thirty plan. There's a lot of pictures out there that change, so I'm I'm a little bit confused.
Well, i- if if we want to get into some of the the objectives that the plan says are are good planning objectives, it talks about buffering sidewalks from uh from the roadway, provides for safety and comfort. Pedestrians, indeed it does. Minimizing parking spaces or loading areas across from sidewalks, minimizing driveway crossing conflicts and this creates driveway crossing. Conflicts. Buffering from vehi- vehicular traffic by using physical separation or landscaping. Uh or or uh and we're effectively taking away landscaping in order to to do this. Page fifty-nine, wide sidewalks to offset uh or protected from travel lanes by vegetation, parked cars, et cetera, et cetera, so it kind of repeats a a number of of themes. And it it strikes me that by doing this, we're 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 going against some of the stated objectives.
I guess what I would say though on that topic is that, you know, we've done a lot of things on the hundred block. That we haven't done anywhere else in Council Bluffs to accommodate the business owners on the hundred block, in fact, we. Remove landscaping to accommodate outdoor dining down there, which honestly should have never gone there in the first place in my opinion, but um you know.
Landscape.
Water, the landscaping, the wa- yeah, no, no, I like the outdoor dining, I use it and love it, so no, but that's water under the bridge, but. We have made accommodation and we've put pedestrians on the curb dining, you know, we've done things that don't match that either, but. You know, it's supposed to be a guide, but if we have to work absolutely within that. On no matter what we do, I don't think that's going to serve the hundred block members and so I want to be really careful, I like the plan. I think we should look at the plan, we should try to always integrate it, but if we were to do that, there were things that happened on that block that would never have happened. And so I don't want us to think that by approving this tonight, we're doing that because we have to have the ability to make those accommodations. I like what's happening on the block, I like that we have outdoor dining. I I don't think we want to take away our ability to treat areas that we have a vision for differently, you know, because of this plan and tell them, no, you can't do that, it's not in the plan, you can't do it. We can't do that.
And we're already creating traffic flow by having the residents turn in there and out of there, so it's it's not like we're. Adding doubling any sort of a a traffic issue or or a safety issue, it's already going to be cars going in there. Um it's just, I I think that this project adds to what I believe to be the overall vision of that area. To get the pedestrians down there, to get more outdoor dining, people outside and and enjoying and and this this fits right in. In my opinion, I don't I don't think it impacts traffic or or safety issues, I I can't, I can't see that.
I can't see it either.
I I, to that point, I took a look, I'm a great believer in best practices, there really are two ways that we can. Uh the new urbanism, the idea of creating the the spaces where business is on the ground for people live above, so you get rid of that. Suburban twentieth century notion that everything, houses have to be here and businesses have to be here and you have to drive a long way to get between the two. Uh people are moving back to the center, baby boomers, and then I suppose my generation and younger uh seem to be driving that even locally. Um and I looked to two things, I looked to the Institute of Transportation Engineers. Uh recommended practice that's called the Designing Walkable Urban Thoroughfare is a context-sensitive approach. Really there, according to them, there are two ways to do it, you can either make it entirely pedestrian. Which we are, and this isn't certainly not an insult, but we are not uh. Hell's Kitchen in New York City, we're not uh. You know, the Back Bay of Boston, we don't have areas where people. Our culture is not such that people will abandon their cars and walk half a mile or a mile. Would I like to see us get to that point someday, personally, yes, I, but I I certainly wouldn't impose. Uh the idea that we get rid of cars in our downtown in twenty-fourteen, uh it's just, that's not what people want, so why would we do it? So the other s- says that if you keep it. Uh the design of Main Streets includes on-street parking. It's considered an important design element on Main Streets, provides a sh- a source of short-term parking for adjacent retail and service uses, buffers pedestrians from traffic and produces a higher level of street activity. The only other thing I'd mention uh is if you go to new urbanism uh sources of information. Uh for example, the New Urban Network, th- they indicate, they also agree on street parking is important because it's not just the number of parking, I appreciate five could be replaced somewhere else. But it's the location. Uh there there are two things to say about that, uh as a proud Midwesterner, if I go to a business and there might only be three. And it's and it's a downtown type environment and there might only be three spaces in front of it and fifty behind it, if all three are full in the front. I'm probably going to go elsewhere because I don't want to wait, we are a very car-centric centric culture. And if there is no parking at all there to begin with and I don't see any parking, I'm probably going to go elsewhere, the other thing from a long term that concerns me is. Just as the the New Urban Network indicates, if you reorient to a suburban model where all the parking's in the back. In traditional buildings, that's where all the stairs are because the grade level entrance is in the front. And so what you do is you've de-incentivized continuing to have the front be on the front street, we're now facing a parking lot. And we we've done that with a lot of buildings in our community the last couple of decades and. It's not really an urban environment, if our goal is to have people out on the street walking and eating and wanting to live in the area. Everybody parking out back, going upstairs, isn't really an urban environment and they talk, you know, the studies indicate that, and I'll speak for myself, I do this. I will be far more likely to to drive too fast down the street in the middle of town if there are no cars on either side. Now, I shouldn't do that, but I do, I think we all do, if we're honest about it, or most of us, not everybody of course. But because if you don't see those cars there, you're going to assume you can go faster because it feels more like a a highway, not quite an interstate, but a highway. Uh the other thing is as a pedestrian and and speaking for myself, plus the studies, you know, when you go out and walk or you jog. Having something that's, you know, one and a half to two tons of metal per vehicle as a jersey barrier. Between you and traffic that's supposed to be going twenty-five, but is it? Um having you walk right on the edge is very much like walking right on the edge of Highway Six, Canesville Boulevard. The traffic's right next to an area where people are supposed to be going, I think thirty-five, I can't say I see it, but um. Nobody walks there, why, because it's a, it's an er- it's a suburban, it's a throughway, it's it's a way to get from point A to point B, it's not a destination. That's why we have Canesville, destination goes on that. Or excuse me, throughway goes on that, destination where you want to stop goes on West Broadway. And we'd be removing that. Uh I think it's it's bad planning, uh it goes contrary to what we're trying to do in the area and it's not safe and so I I can't support it.
Did you happen to look and see whether or not the the space where the uh five spots were removed from the back, which came out at study session today by the way. I had been led to believe by one of the owners on the hundred block, I was not led to believe, I was told straight up twice. That uh that was instigated by Larry Foster in the Parks Department, that they didn't, you know, they agreed to it but didn't want it. Well, I found out today that's not exactly true. Um but I would ask that those five spaces that were taken away, when parking is so scarce. I I'm still not clear what you're going, what's going to happen with that stage space because to use it would mean. The activity would happen in a parking lot in an area that we have said repeatedly has parking problems, so that doesn't make a lot of sense. And I doubt that that area probably meets those guidelines either in that you've got a busy street. Buzzing right by at a main thoroughfare where you're going to put a stage where people are going to be. I'm saying that we make accommodations for different activities and different things that we expect to happen. Um in an area and if that wasn't true, that stage space wouldn't have been left there. And I doubt that it meets those guidelines either, but what we're doing is we're looking through guides to try to find something that says this is wrong. But we don't do that when it's something we want, you know, it's like wow, we want a place for a stage, but. I don't think that Councilman Watson went through any book to look and see whether that met those guidelines, I think we do those things, just like with the diners being out on the curb. They're sitting next to cars, people are opening their car doors where they're eating. And I know some people didn't want it out there, but that's where it is, I'm just saying, we're trying to make an area that it fits. And if you make this entire section where you can't have any outdoor dining, there's going to be no umbrellas, there's going to be nobody sitting outside eating over there. It's like leaving this big gap where we were trying to develop an area where it would be more similar to the old market, I just really don't understand when we say, well. Five spaces, first of all, when I park in the back, I walk through the alleyway and come into the front of the building to begin with. Walking through that alleyway is a hundred times safer than trying to cross that street. I tried the other day and I I'm not kidding, I I really did not know if I was going to make it across alive. So I honestly, it, the traffic is moving that fast and does need to be taken care of, we need to do something about it. But I don't think these five spots are going to make that worse. I I can't imagine that it's going to make that worse and I can't imagine that an elderly person in a wheelchair is going to risk trying to cross that street. Because they want one of those five spaces rather than park in the back and come through the passageway that was created for that purpose, so. I'm, I guess I, I know that this has been a controversial buil- building from the beginning, I hate that we're even having to readdress the issue, I really do. Um but at the same time, I think that this is going to make the block outstanding and I still believe it's a good thing for the block and I still believe it'll create business. Um I'm committed to trying to get a traffic or a parking study, I am committed to ensuring that those spots are replaced. But I will be voting in favor of it, I I think it makes sense.
Well, I I'm, I mean, I've supported this project from from the beginning as as well. And I mean, we're we're here tonight discussing five parking spaces that that might be lost, I mean, as well as the outdoor dining, of course. And the the five spaces have already, it's already been addressed, I guess in my mind. Um if the show wagon area comes out in the back, then that's additional spaces, to to me, it it just makes. Sense from uh from an atmospheric and aesthetic uh point of view, it it balances the other side of the street. Um, that block has been ever-evolving, ever-changing. There weren't that many, uh, bars on it originally. Um, it, it just, more people come down there and it, it just spurs additional development, so. If there's going to be a restaurant, a bar, whatever down there, it's, it's still, the point is it's going to bring more people to the area and that's ultimately what, what we all want. So I, I think we're, we're getting lost in some of this other stuff and, and it's, it's five spaces that were the issue. It's been addressed. And I think, I think it's a great, and I, I would, I would like that to be shown to the camera wherever the, wherever it went. So the people at home can see what we're talking about. I mean, that's, that's a gorgeous building. It, it fits well in the block and it will provide a lot of, uh, additional entertainment. Um, space and, and again, it's f- five parking spaces that seem to be the issue and it's been addressed by the developers, so. Um, I'm, I'm going to support this absolutely.
You get up, then everybody else gets up.
Well, I haven't spoken yet, so I will give my quick statement. I say a lot. There's obviously been voices said by both those for and against. And I will be the first to say I am excited about this building. I mean, I think J Development does an excellent job. I've told you this personally. I am excited for this building. I think it's a great addition to the Hundred Block. Whether you feel the parking is pro or con, I don't think it's the five spaces. I think it is the location of the five spaces. That that issue here, I, you know, we can all debate up and down whether it's better with or without them. My biggest concern, and I've, I've told you this before, this was a promise that was made to many of the business owners. I felt comfortable voting yes when I didn't even promise them at the same time that we did that this would not happen, so. Regardless of if I think it's a great idea or not, the fact that I made the promise I wouldn't, I just, I don't feel like I can change my mind now. I mean, I, I'm excited for the building. I think there's probably still hopefully some possibilities to make some sort of open-air dining possibly, or maybe it will be retail and won't be a problem, but. That, that is why I'm voting no on this is due to the fact that this is a, a big change for, you know, many of those on the block and. Looking at the wide plan of what is the comprehensive plan, what, um, Bluffs Downtown and I had talked about before Josh left. A, a lot of what you said with the use of historic downtown is the parking being right there on the street, so. I'm not saying that's right or wrong, but I do know that's kind of the trend and it's how I feel it should be, so. But mainly, it really is just going back on what we said several months ago to several owners down there, so.
Any other discussion? Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
For those at home who've asked, that was a two in favor, three opposed, so the motion fails. Um, this is the time and place for a public hearing. It's advertised on the matter of. Resolution fourteen dash two fifty-one granting final plat approval for replat of Lot Two Metro Crossing replat one. Into a two-lot subdivision to be known as Metro Crossing replat two. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests of this matter? Anyone who would wish to speak against? Is there anyone here who would wish to speak in favor? What is the pleasure of the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This is the time and place for a public hearing. It's advertised on the matter of resolution fourteen dash two fifty-two. Approving and authorizing the execution of a lease management agreement with the Potawatomi County Historical Society. For the operation and maintenance of the Rock Island Railroad Depot as a public educational and historic facility. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests of this matter? Anyone who would wish to speak against? Anyone here who wishes to speak in favor? What is the pleasure of the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. I'm clerk.
Ordinance sixty-two seventeen amending chapter one point three two, purchasing by amending sections one point three two point zero one zero. Through one point three two zero one nine zero.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Motion to approve per their original staff recommendation.
Second.
Did you want?
No, from my understanding is that, that was rendered boot and we could take up another language at a later date.
Sounds good. Um, any other, any discussion on this matter? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Ordinance sixty-two eighteen amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in section fifteen point two seven point zero two zero B. By rezoning property generally lying south of Avenue G between Curtis Street and North Sixth and Seventh Streets, north of vacated Avenue D. From R two to family residential district. To three low-density multifamily residential district as defined in chapter fifteen point one zero. Setting a public hearing for October thirteen, two thousand fourteen at seven P M.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Ordinance sixty-two thirteen amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in section fifteen point zero two point zero four zero. By rezoning the property located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Gifford Road and Forty-Fifth Avenue immediately west of the Council Plus Recycling Center. From A two Parks Estates and Agricultural to I two General Industrial as defined in chapter fifteen point two one.
Motion to approve per staff recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Ordinance sixty-two fourteen amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in section fifteen point zero two point zero four zero. By rezoning the south half of vacated Franklin Avenue right of way, abutting Lot Seven. Valid you place from R one Single Family Residential to C two General Commercial as defined in chapter fifteen point one five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Ordinance sixty-two fifteen amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in section fifteen point zero two point zero four zero. By rezoning the property located at six twenty-nine Sixth Avenue from R three Low Density Multifamily Residential to A T Administrative Professionals. Defined in chapter fifteen point one three.
I'd make a motion to postpone until the October thirteenth meeting, just based on what was in the non-perel Sunday. This, um, rezoning is for.
Should we second first?
Second.
You'll second?
Yeah.
Discussion.
The reason I wanna postpone it is just to, uh. Give the Board of Supervisors an opportunity to maybe bring forth some explanations for what we read in the paper on Sunday. I'm certainly not opposed to a V A center at all. I know we need this. Um, but at the same time, it was very disturbing. And, uh, we don't have very much information at all. I think the taxpayers deserve to know what happened with that project. And if in fact, they could have done this, um, with a donation rather than raising taxes, I think we need to know that and. So it will go back on the agenda for October thirteenth and, and I would like to. Say we hope by that time the supervisors will have come forward with full explanation of that circumstance, so.
I, I just wanna say I agree completely with Councilmember White. I, I think the, the, uh, Board of Supervisors, uh, should be given a chance to. Give their side of the story. If, if there's any accuracy to the allegations, they are just quite disturbing. And so, uh, the air should be cleared and, and, uh, because they're not going to, as I understand it, bid out, uh, I believe the mayor had indicated. That they're not, uh, they, that, uh, the supervisors had said they're not going to bid out till February or so anyway, due to the higher costs of construction lately. So it won't hold up the construction of, of truly a needed building for our veterans, but it will resolve this issue, so I agree completely and will support her motion.
Any further discussion? The motion on the table is to postpone.
To October thirteenth.
To October thirteenth. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Resolutions, resolution fourteen dash two five three approving the.
Just.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Resolution fourteen dash two five four adopting the Bluffs Tomorrow two thousand thirty plan as the city's comprehensive plan.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify.
I. Sorry. Um. As I indicated earlier, I, I did spend quite a bit of time reading this, uh, this plan over. And I, and I congratulate, uh, the, uh, the, the company that put together the, the study for their, for their work. And there's a lot of valuable data inside of that plan and there's a lot of helpful information, map overlays, uh, traffic flow studies, uh. Topography, all, all things that help to guide, uh, future decision-making. Uh, but as we, uh, as we already learned here to, tonight, word, words can have meaning. And unless you decide that they shouldn't have meaning on, uh, on, on a certain bit of business. Uh, as, as I read over the plan, the, the, the plan itself, uh, says that, uh, that its purpose is, is to help guide amendments to the zoning ordinances. Uh, as well, public work standards to assist accomplishing goals of this comprehensive plan. And the presentation made this afternoon by the study session indicated that, uh, that they would begin. Uh, to put together recommendations to, uh, to make amendments to, uh, to ordinances and to, and to, uh, city standards. Having said that, when I began to, to read the words that went along with all that excellent data and all those graphics. The words started to, uh, concern me a little bit. Cause the words concerning the planning objectives contain, uh, what I deem to be a whole lot of social engineering. And in, and in addition, there's, there's a, there's a great many words in there. That I think if read by a business concern that was thinking about whether or not to relocate to Council Bluffs. Whether, whether or not to expand their business in Council Bluffs or undertake a housing development in Council Bluffs. If this would give them pause to consider as to whether or not they ought to do that and whether or not they're, they're welcome. And I, I found more than a little disconcerting language in there that, that suggested that. Manufacturing and commercial concerns constituted a, an eyesore or a nuisance. Uh, but I found, I found those words. And so, uh, so, um, while I think that this plan will be useful in helping to, uh, to come up with, uh, with future. Decisions on how we, we should proceed, I do not think that we ought to be, uh, be making decisions. About where we wanna take the future based upon, uh, our predictions of what the city ought to be thirty years from now. I would note that nineteen ninety-four plan, if that was followed, uh. And, and making certain decisions about how to proceed, that we would have made some very, very bad decisions a- as a community. Uh, because we can't predict the, the future and, and if, if we can't predict the future. Why is it that we're asking individual developers or businesses to be able to absolutely predict the future of their businesses? For that kinda timeframe ou- outward. So while I think the plan is, is useful, I, I can't, I can't support the, the underlying, uh, objectives and, uh. And so that I have to reluctantly, uh, withhold my, my vote of support.
I, I, uh, spent a lot of time reading the plan. I think, uh, first of all, I wanna thank the people of our community that took the time. To go to the meetings, go to the forums, comment online. There are a lot of different, uh, mechanisms. Um, under which the, the residents of this community had a hand in shaping this plan. I, I think it's a great plan and I, I just want to, um, remind people that it, it's a plan, it's a guideline, it's not written in stone. We, we don't do everything. It's not an all or nothing situation. We have been using, uh, the comprehensive plan since ninety, nineteen ninety-four. It's been through several revisions. I would in, imagine. That, um, because we are here in two thousand fourteen, we don't even know what's gonna happen five years from now, let alone all the way out to twenty thirty. Uh, hence amendments because it is just a plan, it's just a guideline. Uh, it does help us make decisions. Um, the city has visions of what areas could be. And I don't specifically remember the word eyesore in there, but, um, it certainly. Does apply to certain areas of our city. Um, not nice, but true, but there are a lot of very good areas of our city. And, and in my opinion, the plan is to capitalize on those areas, capitalize on the, um, the assets of our community. And move us forward to the future, so I wholeheartedly support this. And again, I thank, uh, the members of our community. That participated in the process, um, and city staff certainly for your countless hours of, of putting this together. So I, I, I do support this.
And, and that was all I was gonna say is just thank you to the staff that did spend so much time on this and more importantly, there really were a lot of citizens. I've. Se- attended several different other forums and meetings and was impressed with the people that took time to come out and give their input and just give us some insight on what. Those of you living here really want or don't like, so thank you to everybody that's here or that's at home watching that did give input and helped to make this plan as great as it has become.
A- and I do want to echo that, that support for all the public, uh, input into this because their, their input is necessary. And helpful and again, there's a lot of useful information in, in here, but, uh, but there's a lot of things that didn't need to, to be in the, in the plan. And, and I would just note that, uh, that when, when I originally was provided a copy with the plan on the twenty-fifth of June. I compared it to what it is today and, uh, but for the addition of, uh, of a couple of sentences, it's, it's identical to the copy that I received on the twenty-fifth of June.
I, I want to say that, um, I, I do support the plan. I do very much, uh, think that, uh, the public input was phenomenal. Could we have had more people? Yes. Do I, do I take however, the point that we need to be very careful as we implement the plan through, through, uh, actual concrete actions in the next sixteen years? To make certain people are consulted and, and no business or class of business or no resident or class of resi- wherever he, she, or the company may be. Um, should be consulted and be a part of that discussion, absolutely. So in that sense, I suppose I find I agree with. Um, quite a bit of what all of my colleagues have said so far on this issue and so, um. Saying that, I believe reading the plan in that light, there was a lot of good work that went into it. I think if, if, uh, as I know will happen, that it will. For the process will go forward in such a way, an inclusive way, uh, and, and in a reasoned way. I think it'll work out very well in that sense, so I, I think it's in the implementation where any, any faults in the writing. Um, would be, uh, would be alleviated. And so I will support it in that sense wholeheartedly.
And I, I too support it. Um, you know, it, it is just that, it, it's a, a plan and it's a blueprint, but. Um, just with, as with the nineteen ninety-four comprehensive plan, you know, not everything in there was done. But that was one of the things that I studied, um, before I came on the council and was just amazed at how many things were accomplished by having a plan in place. And if you get an opportunity, it's still on the website, uh, you'll be surprised at how many things were completed and how many good things happened in our community. Through planning and, uh, again, there are things in here that are mere suggestions. They probably may never happen. Um, I find it interesting that, uh, a councilman used it as a reason not to vote on something and then can't use it. Then can't approve it because he doesn't agree with some of the words in it. I find that, and of course. I just find it amazing that you would use a document you don't believe in to support a vote, so I will be supporting it.
It's what we call irony, I think.
It is really unbelievable.
Precisely. I, I kinda s- found the same irony in the, in the previous vote that we're, we're saying that we support a plan, but. We have, when it comes to an individual project, uh, we, we say that we're, well, that's just a suggestion. It's not really hard and fast. Sometimes like we kinda take the constitution as a suggestion.
Well, I can assure you that I don't think anybody sitting here would vote on this if they believed. That everything in there was absolute and there could never be amendments or changes and that nothing could be done outside of that plan. I can assure everybody, I would never vote to pass this if I knew and believed that that was what this plan would do and that's certainly never been the case. We've had a plan in place for years that that never happened, so. Um, I, I don't want anybody to misconstrue it based on those comments that we're voting for something that we are gonna have to do no matter what. And that's never been what it was about.
N- no, but you know, I'm, I'm, maybe I'm relying upon my military experience too much, but, but you never pass a plan intending not to implement. Military experience too much, but but you never pass a plan intending not to implement it or or to go against it. And and it's to to guide future uh, future decisions and what we were advocated for at the study session is to begin to make. Uh, policy decisions to to implement the the recommendations and and I'm at this point pretty unclear. As to what recommendations we're we're going to to say are valid and and which are not. And that there's a lot of things in there, whether it's from getting people not to drive their automobiles to eating healthier. Uh, what what in the world are we doing putting that sort of things into uh, into a plan? Uh, I, uh, you know, and when we make decisions about about business development, housing developments and and we're gonna say that we're gonna move. Policy uh, in that direction, um, I think we need to be careful about the words that that we're choosing.
I don't think that we talked about making policy off of this. It it's a plan, it's a guideline. There may be some zoning adjustments down the road. But it is, the nineteen ninety-four comprehensive plan was was revised many, many times. Even ordinances that are written and passed are revised, so I think we're getting hung up on on maybe some words. But it's it's merely a guideline and and I think it's a helpful tool to have in our tool belt as we move forward. And 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 that is the intent and that's how I look at at it.
And and I agree. Again, you know, there's a lot of useful data in in here that that's really gonna help inform those those decisions. But the plan itself says that uh, that uh, we need to uh, amend zoning ordinances and uh, and public work standards in order to accomplish. The goals of the comprehensive plan and if we're voting for the comprehensive plan, then it seems like we're saying we're we're in. Uh, so.
But that's like saying when you vote for somebody for office, you agree with every single thing. That they stand for and we all know that's not true. That that is not what this is and I do want to make one clarification. We did not discuss at study session to make policy based on this comprehensive plan. There was a misunderstanding in which the mayor corrected that. We are going to be looking at policy based on the capital improvement policy and how to move. That agenda forward, but I think it was made really clear. We weren't talking about this. When we were talking about having a strategic meeting, it was about how to move the city forward to accomplish things. I didn't understand we were gonna set policy on the comprehensive plan.
No, we're we're confusing topics here at at this point and. And community development had the contractor who wrote this plan that has wrote a number of similar plans for for other cities with similar language in it. And uh, and he said that this helps guide. And and that this would provide a basis to begin making those changes to ordinances and city policy decisions. And that's what the plan itself says, so I think it's very clear in that regard that.
It's a continuation of what we've done since, you know, the nineteen ninety-four plan probably.
I I actually take a positive thing away from this. I think it shows that actually, no, I really do. Um, I I really think it shows that as we as we pass com- comprehensive improvement plans. I think I got, no, excuse me, capital improvement plans, CIPs, the things that generally build the roads, you know, the sidewalks, other infrastructure and the other things we do in our community. I think the debate we have over what. What should money be spent on? What's the proper role of government? What should it do? I think this is all very healthy and I'm glad we're having. That as as we move forward and implement this and I think the plan will be read in that light of there is a disagreement on this topic. And let's have the vigorous debate uh, as we move forward on on specific projects and 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 I really look forward to it and I like that. We've we've got a divergence of opinion because I hope in the end we'll come to a a better answer together. By having that, so I I I think this is actually a very good thing to see. I see sometimes in uh, in uh, papers or otherwise talking newspapers or talking to people that. Any sort of dissent or discussion among among uh, anybody, including us, is is seen as as a bad thing. No, I think it's a very good thing. I think uh. I think we're getting a a good exchange of views and uh, I think it shows why the this plan is is under the circumstances, the right way to move forward and then we'll we'll. We'll discuss it as it goes into the concrete proposal and so I I genuinely look forward to that process.
Alright, dare I call for the vote?
Yes, please.
Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Nay.
And again, for those at home, that's four in favor and one against.
Resolution fourteen dash two five five of support of the Council Plus Interstate System Landscape Master Plan.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Resolution fourteen dash two five six authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a grade crossing service contracted work agreement. In connection with the I eighty, I twenty-nine interstate improvements.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Resolution fourteen dash two five seven authorizing the mayor to approve the annual city fi- street financial report.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Resolution fourteen dash two five eight authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Judd's Brothers Construction Company. The Mosquito Creek North Sewer Relocation Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Resolution fourteen dash two five nine. Authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with A B C Electric Incorporated. For the Nor twenty-eight street bomb station telemetry project.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Resolution fourteen dash two six zero confirming the appointment of Mark Howard in the position of Chief Information Officer. With the City of Council Plus and approving the wage and benefit package offered to him.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mark, do you wanna step forward and introduce yourself? Tell us a little bit about you.
Good evening. My name is Mark Howard. Um, been in the Omaha area for thirty-one years, been in an I T that whole time. Um, spent time on the applications development side and then also on infrastructure. Uh, spent number of years managing different teams and for different corporations in town. Um, Mutual Omaha, Peter Kewitt Sons, Conagra Foods, Kawasaki, Allegiant, Creighton Health and current employer IP Pathways. Um, looking forward to uh, starting soon and seeing uh, where we're at and where we need to go and see if the master plan has some ideas too, so.
Any discussion or any questions for Mark?
I'm just uh, very happy to have you coming on board. We've got some real needs and I think we're all really excited to see. Our systems coming up to. Up to grade. We've we've got some issues that really needed attention, so.
I think as we as we move our our system fully into the twenty-first century, I really want to commend Mayor Walsh for uh.
Twenty-first century.
Well, hopefully a little for, but uh. I still want to commend him for uh, I think this is a really good uh, a good idea. It it definitely will create efficiencies. Within government and uh, with the citizens, the taxpayers and it's fantastic and. His nominee is is just extremely qualified on both both sides both and the the. As the mayor explained this afternoon, your your eminent qualifications and both heading, being more of an administrator versus also the. Being able to get your hands on into the project and that's quite a unique combination, so I very much support the mayor's nominee nomination of you. Look forward to seeing you work with the city.
Uh, I think this is a a great step forward for us. Um, and thank you to the Mayor Walsh for identifying this this uh, this need. And um, appointing some or hiring someone. When I first started on the council eleven years ago. There were, correct me if I'm wrong, there were computer systems within the city that didn't couldn't even communicate with each other, so. Five different systems?
Five years ago.
Five years ago, okay, but you know, so we need help. Um, I hope you like a challenge.
Thank you, thank you. Any further discussion or any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Applications for permits and cancellations eight A, B and C.
Motion to approve eight A through C inclusive.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Any citizens' requests could be heard?
None to, none received.
Anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? Any other business by the council? And with that, we're adjourned. Thank you.